Brian, I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait for you to tell me when Tom's ready to start, okay?
We're just trying to get Counselor Keach connected. Tom said we're ready.
So, for those who are just tuning in now, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we started a, the meeting earlier at 5:30, we went into non-public session, we've come out of non-public session, and we're back to our regular scheduled seven o'clock meeting. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read the instructions for this evening, and then we'll go to the agenda, okay? Welcome to the May 11th, 2020 Electronic Meeting of the City Council. We are meeting electronically due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic in accordance with the Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020 Number 4. Please note, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order, we provide a public notice of the necessary information for assessing this meeting. Instructions are provided on our agenda and the City Council's website at conquerednh-ledgestar.com backslash calendar dot A S P X. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the City Council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting, and the public has access to listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through clicking the following website address. US02web.zoom.us backslash J backslash eight nine four two five nine one eight three three three. If any member of the public does not have a website access, they may dial the telephone number nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine and enter the webinar ID number eight nine four two five nine one three, excuse me, eight three three three. For those of you who want to provide public testimony in a public hearing portion of the meeting, you are connected to the Zoom website. You may click on the raised hand icon in the attendees section to make the request. When the time is appropriate, you will be recognized by me and you will provide, you can provide your testimony. For the members of the public who are participating by phone, you may dial star nine to alert me that you want to testify. We will not be using the chat function in Zoom for this meeting. Please note that testimony is only allowed for the agenda items that have been scheduled for public meeting, public hearing, excuse me, and the public participation is not authorized for any other agenda, item on the agenda. If anyone has problem accessing the meeting, please call six oh three two three zero four six one nine, or send an email to citycouncilmeeting@conquerednh.gov. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, and when you state your presence of the meeting, please state where you are and if there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Here, home, no one in the room with me.
Mayor Boulay.
I am at home, in my office, and no one is here, other than I.
Counselor Champson.
I am present in my home, and there is no one in the room with me.
Counselor Fennessey.
Good evening, I am in the office in my home, and there is nobody in the room with me.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
I am present in my home, and no one is in the room with me right now.
Counselor Hatfield.
I'm present at home, and no one is in the room with me.
Counselor Keach. Counselor Kennison.
I'm present in my home, no one is here.
Counselor Kretovic.
I am present in my home, it's a loft. Bill Kretovic and Jack Kretovic are in the house, they're not listening.
Counselor Matson.
I, I'm here in my home, in my room, and there is no one in the room with me.
Counselor Nian.
Present at home, alone.
Counselor Pierce.
In my home office, alone.
Counselor Vice Hawkins.
I'm present in my home, and I'm in the room alone.
Counselor Todd.
Here at home, no one in the room with me.
Counselor Warner.
I am here, my home, and no one is in the room with me.
Okay, does anybody know where Counselor Keach went?
He's an attendee. He's a participant.
Mr. Manager, could you move, Counselor, from an attendee, I believe, to a participant?
He dropped, he wasn't an attendee, but I think he must have signed out again.
Okay. Counselor Keach just informs me that he is on as a guest, he's trying to get on, he's present alone. Okay, we'll move forward. As you'll notice, Counselor Nian has a, the appropriate backdrop is an American flag. If you could all join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have before us the, the meeting minutes for April 13th, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Matson, seconded by Counselor Champlin. Is there any comments, changes, requests? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Here.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Vice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner. Counselor Warner.
Yes, apologies.
Thank you, motion passed, it's Counselor Kretovic, did you have your hand up?
I do, Your Honor, would you entertain a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session?
Thank you very much, Counselor Kretovic makes a motion to seal the public.
I would second that, Counselor Pierce.
Motion is seconded by Counselor Pierce. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Here.
Is that a yes to seal the minutes?
Yeah, I guess, it's a yes to seal the minutes, all right.
It's okay. Mayor Boulay?
I am also here, but I'm gonna vote yes as well.
Counselor Champlin.
People would question whether I'm here, but I will vote yes.
Counselor Fennessey.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Here, in here.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Vice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Okay, have that, the motion is approved. That takes us to our consent agenda. Before I entertain a motion, I just want to note that Number 17, which is the Beaver Meadow Golf Course membership rates, there was a revised report, if we could, when, when whoever makes the motion, if you could please note the revised report on the 17 rate. Is there a motion?
Your mayor, I need to recuse from item number 17 because I am an existing member at the golf course.
Okay, move approval.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Nian, seconded by Counselor Grady Sexton. With that, please note that Counselor Kretovic will not be voting on item 17. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessey.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Vice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Thank you very much, with that, motion is approved. Takes us to our public hearings this evening. Madam Clerk, if you could read item 24A, please?
It's an ordinance amending the code of ordinances Title I Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-3 Parking Meters. It's a proposal to convert certain metered parking spaces from three hours to 10 hours near 60 to 62 Pleasant Street in Concord.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Just by here, do we lose this city manager?
Carlos is clicking for me back there. On January 9th, 2020, we were contacted for a variety of requests concerning parking near 60 through 62 Pleasant Street. Correspondence, together with responses from staff and passengers, report, parking committee reviewed the concerns. On the review, the parking committee voted unanimously to recommend the time limit for the parking meters along the frontage of 60 through 62 Pleasant Street be changed from 10 hour to 3 hour. Two meter spaces will be affected by this change. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, does anyone have any questions? Seeing no hands raised, at this time, we'll open the public hearing, and Mr. Manager, do we have anyone who wishes to testify?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close the public hearing, and, excuse me?
You might want to wait about 30 seconds or so, just because of the delay with YouTube and Concord TV.
If you could do like the Jeopardy music in between these, that'd be great.
Remember to pick Mute Dog, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Manager, I don't see anyone, do you have any?
Ready to go.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and with that, we will also ask Madam Clerk to read item 24B, please.
It's an ordinance amending the code of ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-1 Stopping Standing in Parking, Section 18-1-E Parking Time Limited in Designated Places Schedule III by removing the two-hour time limit on School Street between Liberty Street and Pine Street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Our members of the council on December 9th, 2019, Michelle Rady Coffin, owner of a duplex at 98 through 100 School Street, contacted city administration concerning the two-hour time limit on School Street between Liberty and Pine Street. June 23rd, the parking committee met to review Ms. Rady Coffin's concerns. It was noted that if the two-hour time limit were to be eliminated, it's likely that student parking associated with the high school could increase the consumed available supply of parking. Upon review, the parking committee voted unanimously to Upon review, the Parking Committee voted unanimously to recommend the elimination of the two-hour time limit on School Street between Liberty and Pine Streets. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. If anybody in the public would like to testify, now is your chance. Mr. Manager?
All set. No comments.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on that item. And, Madam Clerk, if you could read item twenty-four C, please.
It's an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, Title Two Traffic Code, Chapter Eighteen Parking, Article eighteen dash one Stopping Standing in Parking, Section eighteen dash one dash six Parking Prohibited at All Times in Designated Places, Schedule One by amending Schedule One and creating a no parking zone at the westerly end of District Five Road.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
My members of the council, on November twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, Mr. Don Ross, resident of District Five Road, contacted City Administration requesting that no parking zones be created near the intersection of Old Diamond Road and District Five Road. On January twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty, the Parking Committee met to review Mr. Ross's concern. It was noted that the General Services Department, um, supports the request due to the difficulty of maneuvering equipment within the area for vehicles to park, especially during winter conditions. On review, the Parking Committee voted unanimously to recommend the establishment of a no parking zone near the westerly end of District Five Road. Um, should note that, uh, we also, um, checked with the, uh, representative of, uh, city staff to the Conservation Commission, and it doesn't, uh, look like there'd be any, um, problem with, uh, people accessing the trail system. It's just eliminating that parking section and that small piece, so it would not impact, uh, access to, uh, the city's trail system through that area. Glad to answer any questions. And we do have a public comment from Mr. Roy Schweiker, which came in, which I think is been made available to everybody, been made available to all the city councils.
Okay. Um, Counselor Mattson.
Hi, thank you. Um, I had been contacted by constituent who was, um, concerned that there might not be any parking at all, um, to be able to access from that particular point. And, um, if we're just stopping it at the end, is there any parking along the street at all, any, where someone could park at the side of the road so that they could access, or, uh, um, their concern is that they can't, they don't have the ability to walk the full length from Carter to Swope, and that's a great place for them to, to stop and get to. So, is there any parking outside if we stop at the end of the street? Is there any parking at all on the main, on the street coming in that they could park legally on the side of the road?
Mr. Manager, you want to answer that?
Yes, if you look at the map, um, that is part of the package, you can see it's really a hundred eighty feet from the end of the right-of-way district, um, just around that, uh, section there. Um, so there is places to park along the side of the street. How convenient it is, it's just people gonna have to walk longer, but I think the question is, if you're, if you're out there for hike anyways, does it really make a difference?
Right. No, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that they could legally park on the street.
And, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I did receive some feedback from some constituents in Ward Three that were stating that there are at times when access to our trails are blocked through that conservation land. Is that something that we can have, uh, city staff or members of the Conservation Commission look into when it is appropriate to do so? Given COVID-nineteen.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy is on the line, but, yeah, I believe they already are and have been for quite some time.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Hapton?
Thank you. Um, the city manager answered my question, cuz it was similar to Counselor Mattson's, um, and I've also heard concerns similar to what Counselor Kretovic has raised. Um, so a question for the city manager, when people see, um, access being impacted, um, how do they report that? What would be the appropriate channel?
Mr. Manager?
They, uh, they contact the Conservation Commission, uh, or through, um, the city staff, through the, uh, Planning Department and ask for Beth, uh, or the Legal Department.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I do not see any other hands raised. So, seeing no one else, um, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to testify? Mr. Manager, I'm waiting for you to give me the thumbs up.
And I'm waiting for the person receiving the phone calls to give me the thumbs up, so I'll give the thumbs up as soon as I get the thumbs. No testimony.
Okay, with that, then we'll close the public hearing. And, Madam Clerk, if you could read item twenty-four D, please.
It's an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, Title Two Traffic Code, Chapter Eighteen Parking to reestablish law enforcement only parking near the federal complex on Pleasant Street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
My members of the council, on June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, city council enacted ordinance three zero four four, which eliminate law enforcement only parking on Section of Pleasant Street along portions of the federal building and courthouse. Law enforcement parking was removed or replaced with metered parking in mid-January of twenty twenty. Shortly after the change, US Marshals Office contacted the city objecting to the change due to security concerns. Marshals Office verbally requested that the law enforcement parking be reestablished at this location. The Parking Committee discussed the Marshals' request at, on January twenty-three, twenty twenty. It was the consensus of the Parking Committee to reestablish the law enforcement only parking at this location. Seven metered parking spaces will be affected by this change. The attached ordinance, which you have reestablished the law enforcement parking, existed prior to its removal in January twenty twenty. Law enforcement only parking is valid twenty-four hours per day, seven days per week. It's important to note that the metered parking on Pleasant Street near South Street, as well as South Street and South Spring Street along the frontage of the federal court complex, will remain unchanged. The bus stop at Pleasant Street frontage on the courthouse will also remain unchanged. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Um, Counsel Fantasy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, question for the city manager. Uh, I'm looking at the map, and I know you just made reference to, uh, the, the meter parking on South Street and then at the corner of Pleasant and South being unchanged. Has the, have the US Marshals signed off on us doing that, and is that the manner in which it was done previously?
Mr. Manager?
That, that, no, previously, they actually were parking there, and then when the Parking Committee changed it to allowing the general public to park there, um, as a matter of fact, uh, the mayor and I met with the, uh, the, who run the courthouse, and they agreed that they didn't really need to have the parking there set aside for that purpose. So, when I say unchanged, I mean, uh, leave it the way the Parking Committee put it back in January twenty twenty.
Can I ask a follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Please, please.
Thank you. So, uh, just so that I, I understand this correctly, the, the US Marshal did not have a problem with us having two ten-hour metered parking at the corner of Pleasant and South Street?
Which quarter are you talk, which, which street are you talking about specifically? If it's, if it's Pleasant Street, then yes. If it's South Street, then no.
Okay. I was talking about, uh, Pleasant. I'm looking at the, the map that was attached to the report, where there's a purple, uh, line with ten-hour meters.
They, they are, they are okay with that.
Thank you.
Um, my apologies. I have a hand raised. I have a, a green dot and a, and a blank next to it, so does somebody raise their hand?
That would be Counselor Keach.
Hey, Counselor Keach.
Thank you. Um, uh, is there an obligation, um, to give those spots away to the federal government, or can they just roll over us? Because it occurs to me, uh, when I go by there, and I go by there often, that it is often, um, has nothing to do with security or trials or anything, because they have a, an underground garage where high-profile people go in and whatever. It's law enforcement that park out front. And it just occurs to me that there ought to be some compensation given to the city for, for that. And I've, I've made this argument before with the state in terms of all those meters around the State House, which is another bone of contention, but it's sort of the same problem. So, is there any pushback? I guess is my basic question.
Mr. Manager, you want me to answer this one?
Yes, please.
So, um, uh, we, we, uh, we tried that argument, and it fell on deaf ears. And in fact, um, the pushback came from them. Um, they actually have the power to shut down Pleasant Street if they wish. And, um, so I think this was a, uh, very fair, reasonable compromise, uh, that ensures the safety of the federal building, uh, law enforcement and all the people who work in the courthouse. And I think it works with, um, with, uh, the Parking Committee's recommendation to, that this is a, a fair recommendation. And if, uh, Counsel Champlin, if you wanna add anything from the Parking Committee, feel free, but that's...
Yeah, Your Honor, I, I think to us, this was basically kind of the immovable object, as you outlined. Um, it's, uh, uh, I, I, I don't think I wanna try to make any flip comments to characterize it, but basically, uh, I'd say we don't really have leverage in this matter, and that the arrangement that you see before you is the best possible solution that we could come to for the city.
Counsel Keach, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, not seeing anyone else with a hand raised. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to testify?
Just so you know, Carlos is quite a nerd by me staring at him from the corner.
I think we're all staring at him right now. Okay, okay. Uh, seeing no one wishing to testify, we'll close the public hearing. And, Madam Clerk, if you could read item twenty-four E, please.
It's a resolution appropriating a sum of fifty-five hundred dollars from the arena fund balance for the procurement of outside services to develop a detailed cost estimate of an existing conceptual design for an arena addition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
My members of the council, the Arena Advisory Committee feels it is best interest of the city to, uh, request these dollars and the funding to accomplish a detailed cost analysis for the, uh, this to be part of the Kiwanis Project, currently programmed in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, CIP sixty. Uh, this also was brought before the Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee, and the Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee's consensus was that, that the funds be provided to, um, the advisory, the Arena Advisory Committee so they can undertake this work.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions for the manager? Uh, Counsel Fantasy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a quick question for the city manager. Uh, what is the anticipated scope of the addition?
In terms of cost or size, or?
No, more, in terms of, I guess, size and what, what they're actually looking to do. Obviously, costs, they're not gonna figure out until they design it.
The, the idea would be to put on a major addition in the back, um, for restaurant space and provide, uh, additional services to the, um, the folks who use the arena, and maybe actually some user space to be able to have events. Uh, the, um, estimated cost that they had come up with originally, uh, looking at this and talking to the private sector developers was somewhere around about eight million dollars. So, they're trying to make a determination of whether or not, uh, as if they provide a little bit more research into this, what exactly what it would look like, how it would work, and whether or not, um, it's something that they would recommend moving forward with at a future date.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Just, Mr. Manager, let me know if there's anybody there. Does anybody else find the silence really awkward?
Not when I'm looking at such interesting faces, Your Honor.
I'm a Buddha. We live for silence.
No comments. All right, uh, no comments with that. We'll close the public hearing. And, uh, Madam Clerk, if you could read item twenty-four F, please.
It's a resolution appropriating a sum of sixty thousand dollars for the purpose of offsetting personnel costs for the police department to assign an officer to the drug task force and accepting the sum of sixty thousand dollars from the state of New Hampshire Attorney General's Drug Task Force.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
My members of the council, the state of New Hampshire Attorney, brought task forces approved the worth sixty thousand dollars to the Concord Police Department designate to offset personnel expenses associated with the department assigning an officer to the drug task force. It's recommended that the council accept and appropriate this grant funding shares in the best interest of both the Concord Police Department and the drug task force in a coordinated effort to combat illegal drug issues in the community. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for the manager? Um, Counsel Hatfield?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, Mr. Espell, does that, does the sixty thousand dollars completely offset, um, our costs related to that assignment?
It does. It does in terms of all, all of our, um, uh, costs or what value we get out of it. The same time, we're receiving that officer's receiving training, and there is time when that officer's also working and the, uh, the effort is working in the, the city at the same time, to have come up with this number, and that seems to be, um, uh, work for both agencies.
Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Keach?
Uh, my one question is, given the shortage of police officers on the street, um, I understand the importance and, um, effectiveness of sharing police officers inter-agency. Um, can we afford to do that in terms of personnel on the ground here in Concord?
Your Honor, may I bring in, um, if you can answer that question?
Uh, whatever you need to do.
Okay, keep on going. You're on.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, can I just get the question one more time?
Counsel Keach? Counsel Keach, will you ask the question again, please?
Do you have me? Um, I'm muted. Do you have me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So, given the shortage of, of, of police officers on the resources, and, and I, I don't doubt the benefit of sharing resources. as force and so forth, but, um, we, is this a reasonable shortage of, um, police officers, uniformed guys on the ground in Concord this time?
Chief, did you get the question?
I, I got the gist of it, it was a little, uh, broken, but, um, we already have existing resources, and just really, this is going to be a, a lateral transfer. So, we're not reducing, um, an FTE off of patrol division, this is really just a lateral transfer from our investigative staff.
Counselor Keach, does that answer your question?
A, 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 an accounting, uh, thing where money's moved to another, is that fair to say?
Chief?
I didn't catch any of that.
Yeah, I'm breaking. Look, Counselor Keach wants to know is, um, uh, are we fully accounting for all the time and money?
Yes, absolutely. We've, we've been a participant with the Attorney General's Drug, Drug Task Force, um, for many, many years. We probably haven't been with them for the past, say, eight years, but we find it's in our best interest to collaborate with them, um, and, and partner with them moving forward, uh, as we fight this epidemic.
Thank you very much. Any further questions for the chief? Thank you very much, Chief. Seeing no further questions, we, let's, uh, open the public hearing.
No comment, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, I could ask you to, uh, read twenty-four G, please.
It's a resolution appropriating a sum of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars for equipment, professional development, and overtime, and accepting the sum of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars in United States Department of Justice fiscal year twenty-twenty coronavirus emergency supplemental funding for this purpose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Members of the Council, we're bringing along the Concord Police Department to purchase equipment and supplies necessary, uh, for the response to long-term pa- pandemic. This equipment predominantly will consist of, of, of collective equipment for department personnel, as well as disinfecting and sanitizing agents for equipment and work areas. Funding will also be utilized to ensure that select department personnel may be able to work remotely and minimize staff having to work out of police headquarters. Additionally, funding will also be used for overtime expenses, as well as training expenses. Be glad to answer any questions.
Very much. Any questions for the manager? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to testify.
No comment, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, if you could read item twenty-four H, please.
It's a resolution appropriating a sum of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the annual highway improvement program project, CIP number seventy-eight, and accepting and authorizing the use of revenue received for departmental services completed in conjunction with the capital project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Your Honor, members of the Council, recall that when we were trying to determine, um, paving dollars, the Council came up with a solution over several roads that we would not be able to pave, um, and, um, and the, I requested was go look at those roads, that list of roads, and determine which ones to do, which was not to do. Instead of, uh, I brought you a different solution, working with General Services. General Services received fifty-one thousand, six hundred and two dollars during the current fiscal year from the state of New Hampshire for the widening of the South Route Street and the voluntary, uh, shared curb program. We've also built and now received one hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars from utility, uh, Liberty Utilities for two thousand and eighteen paving, and utility, Liberty Utilities for the Court Street two thousand and nineteen paving. So essentially, working with these other folks who are impacting our road systems, instead of them doing the roadwork, and then, um, paying a penalty to us, where they, we're helping them save dollars, and they're helping us save dollars by providing us with the dollars directly upfront. So if you put those two together, we've accept, we can accept and authorize a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which will cover all of the roads that we, uh, would, would be short on, um, which you can see above in your report. Uh, um, actually, you could see, uh, which would be Field Street, Kent Street, Liberty Street, Park Ridge Road, Ridgewood Lane, Wildmere Terrace, Bryant Street, Ballast Street, Watkins Way. Um, so, uh, our recommendation is that you accept and appropriate these dollars, and we can pave all of those roads. Glad to answer any questions.
Who has questions for the manager? Uh, Mr. Manager, I actually have one. So, um, we've been out to bid and, and, uh, received the bids for, uh, next year's paving, correct?
Or this year's paving, correct.
And how were the prices that we received?
We, we agreed with, uh, Continental to keep the prices the same. Well, our experience, as we talked to many other communities in the area, and found actually that prices have increased. So the, uh, what happens is when oil prices, uh, go, go up, uh, paving costs go up, and when oil prices go down, paving costs go up. And so unfortunately, it's, it's counterintuitive, and I'm being facetious, obviously, but we, we've seen no savings, um, and I think there's probably enough work going on in the, in the private sector, meaning the private sector and other governmental agencies who are doing paving, that, uh, paving companies have seen no reason to lower their prices. So this makes sense to continue to use, uh, the same prices that we had last year. And we can get, and all that work I just mentioned, we would get that work done, um, this year.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Hatfield, did you have your hand raised?
I did, but you asked my question. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, before we open the public hearing, I'll just say, Counselor Pierce, where that bog road sure is smooth, ride my bike down the street. Okay. With that...
Very, very nice. You're doing a great job.
You are. Uh, at this time, we'll open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to testify on this item?
Just, just so you know, I, I think there's about a fifty-four second delay. So that's, that's really what we're waiting for, approximately that. It varies. No comment, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, if you could read the last public hearing this evening, item twenty-four I, please.
It's a resolution appropriating a sum of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for equipment and overtime, and accepting the sum of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from depart, in the Department of Justice fiscal year twenty-twenty coronavirus emergency supplemental funding.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Manager.
Members of the Council, we're bringing along the Concord Fire Department to purchase equipment and supplies necessary for response for the long-term pandemic. This equipment predominantly will consist of personal protective equipment for department personnel, as well as disinfecting and sanitizing agents for equipment and work areas. Additionally, the funds will be used for overtime expenses associated with staffing, an additional ambulance that is equipped with high-level PPE and decontamination equipment. Be glad to answer any questions. And I should just note, you can see, there's a whole nut, series of funding here, making, uh, the cities going after to, uh, help recoup our costs and provide additional services.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the manager? I believe, uh, Counselor Hatfield.
Yes, thank you. Um, I wanted to thank the manager and the staff for, um, being proactive in looking for these funding sources, and I was wondering, um, if you have any insights into things that might be available on the horizon in other areas, um, things maybe you're seeing in other municipalities. Um, and Mr. Mayor, I didn't know if you had any insights into that either.
Want to go first? So, um, I would just simply, um, I think this is something everybody already knows, but, um, just put a little bit more on it, and that is, uh, the governor. One of the things that the cities and towns ask the, the, uh, the governor, in terms of the CARES Act money, is that, uh, the governor be willing to release some of those funds during the current fiscal year, um, the, so that we can recoup and prevent for more losses during the current fiscal year and going forward. So, uh, I believe it was forty thousand, forty million dollars that the, uh, governor identified for reimbursements for COVID-related expenses, uh, for cities and towns. And, um, our allocation of that was a little over a million dollars. So, um, there are three rounds in which you can actually get those reimbursements, and the first will be for the, um, I think it's June first, for the two months, um, that began. So we'll be able to at least gather some of those dollars, uh, during this current, uh, FY twenty budget. Mr. Manager, you ready on that?
Yeah, so, and also, you probably heard, uh, Counselor, about the, um, uh, first responder stipends. So those, um, we've, uh, submitted, I think it was today. Um, the listing of all our first responders, the money will be forwarded to the city. The city will pay out, uh, to our hundred fifty, hundred and sixty first responders, and, um, whatever money is not used, then is, is sent back, um, to the state. In addition to that, there's a whole series, I, as, uh, several committees working on, internal committees working on all of these different programs that are available out there through different groups, and keeping track of, we've been keeping track through finance of all of our expenses that can in any way be tangentially linked to the COVID situation, and getting reimbursed for those. Taking a look also at investment.
I want you to picture this, it was quite impressive. Um, I had the opportunity to visit the, uh, fire headquarters last week, and if you can imagine this whiteboard in, um, uh, Sean Brown's office, he's got these, these four categories, um, CARES, FEMA, and two others, I can't remember. And it is literally, um, a sight to be seen as to what fits in what bucket, uh, all to be reimbursed. And you, it's, becomes a challenge because you, you want to go through, for instance, FEMA first, and then CARES Act second, and it is, it is quite an amazing board he has, and trying to keep track of all this. So, um, I, I, to compliment, uh, the manager and your whole entire group, um, it's, they're taking this incredibly seriously, and I think they're going to have every single dollar they possibly can before this is through.
Thank you very much.
Um, seeing no one else, uh, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. While we're waiting, I'll just share with you, it was, um, it's important to note, last week, the Treasury Department came out with, uh, advised, uh, revised, uh, guidelines. They were much more flexible than the initial, um, a draft, and, uh, I think that is enabling cities and towns to actually try to, um, truly recoup some of the, the costs that we've incurred. But it was, that first, uh, opinion that came out from Treasury was so tight that it was very extremely difficult.
Uh, there's no comment. Just so you know, Chief, Chief Newberry is being, is, uh, on the attendees list paying attention, so he'd like to know when he could have his money to get, to get going.
All set? Okay. So with that, uh, we'll close the public hearing. It takes us to our action phase, uh, otherwise known as the, um, Madam Clerk, Janet Bonn fought showtime, so do we have a motion on item twenty-five, please?
Counselor Nine moves approval. Counselor Champlin seconds.
Thank you very much, Counselor Nine. Counselor Champlin, second. Um, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boue.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton. Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison. Yes, okay. Counselor Krevic.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
With that, the motion is approved. Uh, Madam Clerk, item twenty-six, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II, Chapter Code, Chapter Eighteen Parking, Protocol eighteen dash one, Stopping Standing in Parking, Section eighteen dash one dash eight, Parking Time Limited in Designated Places, by removing the two-hour time limit on School Street between Liberty Street and Pine Street.
Counselor Nine moves approval. Counselor Champlin seconds.
Thank you very much. Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? Uh, Counselor Fantasy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was not able to attend the meeting, uh, of the Parking Committee on this issue. Uh, someone who lives in that neighborhood and sees the high school parking uh, issue, which is not only an issue that occurs during the week, but also on the weekends, uh, I would speak against this. Uh, I think, once you remove this, uh, parking restrictions on, on this area of School Street, it's just going to be the new place for high school students to park, and I think you're going to have a number of residents in the area not very happy.
Anyone else? Uh, Counselor Chapman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counselor, uh, Counselor, uh, Fantasy, um, you raised an excellent point. Uh, the, uh, Parking Committee, uh, in your absence, did discuss that, that point, uh, and, uh, uh, I think that we, uh, fell on, on the side of being responsive to this particular resident and her problems. Uh, but, uh, with the, uh, Parking Enforcement, uh, will be keeping an eye on the situation, and, uh, I believe that our feeling, uh, as I recall it, was that if in fact, uh, this is, uh, a problem with student parking, we would revisit the question. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Counselor Keach. Counselor Keach?
Yes, sorry. Uh, I'm, uh, leery of this approach, because I think, um, you've started an ad hoc sort of approach to parking, and parking is a major headache and a, a problem, and I think there needs to be some consistency. And, um, I don't think it should be neighborhood, neighborhood, I think there should be a policy that's a little more city-wide, if that makes sense.
Anyone else? I'll just note that, um, the Parking Committee did, did unanimously adopt or approve this. Um, I think it, I do appreciate the comments that were made. I think that, um, uh, the Council, uh, Parking Committee was being responsive to the neighborhood. I do believe that, uh, the neighbors were just, this item was discussed with the neighbors, not only with the person who brought it forth. Um, and I think, as Counselor Champ said pointed out, that I think we are, um, we are responsive enough that if it doesn't work out, then we can go back and revisit it. But, uh, given the information that was presented to us, uh, given how... given how the evolution of parking in that whole neighborhood around the high school and what is being asked for here, I think is probably reasonable. So I think it's worth trying, from my personal opinion. Counsel Fantasy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one more point, and this is sort of echoes what Counselor Keach was referring to. This is not the only duplex in the area with limited parking. And I think you're going to see additional properties throughout the neighborhood look for similar relaxation of the parking restrictions, which I think is going to create more issues than the current setup, which I think is appropriate.
And quite frankly, that may well be. But in the past, I can tell you that, you know, we'd have one person on a street bring forth a letter saying, please ban all parking on the street, and the council would do it. So you can walk around the neighborhood or around the school. And I can, there's a few places I could point to a specific house with a specific, you know, person who may have been an editor of a newspaper, who requested his street be be parking prohibited, and lo and behold, the council responded. So you know what? There is no rhyme to reason at times as to why, how things evolved the way they did. And I think, you know what, maybe we'll have to deal with this on a case by case, but I do think it's worth a try on this one. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, we do have a motion. Correct? Madam Clerk?
We do, yes. Counselor Nian, seconded by Counselor Champlin.
Thank you very much. Are you ready for the question? Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
No.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
No.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item twenty-seven, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter eighteen Parking, Article eighteen dash one, Stopping Standing in Parking, Section eighteen dash one dash six, Parking Prohibited All Times in Designated Places by amending Schedule One by creating a no parking zone at the Westerly end of District Five Road.
Counselor Champ moves approval. Is there a second?
Counselor Bouchard seconds.
Thank you very much. Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Counsel Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is not the first time this area of District Five Road has come before the council on a number of different issues. And each time we discuss the trails and the trailheads in this area, we receive complaints from people that use the trails about the property owners that are blocking access to the trails that we've essentially paid handsomely a conservation easement for. Were it not for the fact that General Services also uses this T at the end of District Five for turning around and they were having issues, I wouldn't have supported it. But because they need this access, I will support it. There was definitely some confusion from people. They thought that the entire end was going to be shut off for them. And I just want to make sure that the city does indeed follow through with the property owners to assure that our residents have access to the conservation land and the trails that we have paid for, especially at this time when people are using the trails throughout the city. This is the best time to get out, enjoy what we have here, and I would hate to think someone is restricting what the taxpayers have funded. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Hatfield?
Thank you. I second everything that Counselor Kretovic said. I can't say it better. And I would just add that to the extent that there are ongoing issues with access and also parking related to the state easement, I would love to have the city engaged to try to get this resolved once and for all, and I'd be happy to participate if that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Mattson. Counselor Mattson, unmute, please.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Kretovic and Hatfield on their comments. And I just wanted to say, I do think we want to keep an eye on parking opportunities. I think with the increase in trails, if we can find areas where we can improve or find some parking for them, so that they can get the access, it's important. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. No one else wishing to... Counselor Mattson, you all said?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So with that, you ready for the question? Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian. Counselor Nian.
I think he froze.
Counselor.
Yes.
Was that Counselor Nian?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
And with that, the motion is approved. Madam Clerk, item twenty-eight, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter eighteen Parking, to reestablish law enforcement-only parking near the federal complex on Pleasant Street. Counselor Bouchard moves approval.
I have Counselor Bouchard making motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Nine. Any discussion? I will simply share with you, it was one of the, one of my favorite meetings I've ever attended with the manager. It's never been so forceful and so polite all at once. Okay, we have a motion and we're ready for the question. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
No.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner. Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, the motion is approved. Madam Clerk, item twenty-nine, please.
It's a resolution appropriating a sum of five thousand five hundred dollars from arena fund balance for the procurement of outside services to develop a detailed cost estimate of an existing conceptual design for an arena additions.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Nine, seconded by Counselor Grady Sexton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach. Counselor Keach.
I'm sorry, yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Having received an necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item thirty, please.
It's a resolution appropriating a sum of sixty thousand dollars for the purpose of offsetting personnel costs for the police department to assign an officer to the drug task force and accepting the sum of sixty thousand dollars from the State of New Hampshire Attorney General's Drug Task Force. Counselor Bouchard moves approval.
Counselor Mattson, seconds.
Thank you very much. I heard Counselor, Counselor Bouchard, Mayor Broten makes the motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Mattson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have been received an necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item thirty-one, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars for equipment, professional development, and overtime, and accepting the sum of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars in United States Department of Justice Fiscal Year 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding.
Counselor Mattson moves approval. Counselor Kretovic, seconds.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Counselor, or Mayor Boulay, excuse me.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach. Counselor Keach. Okay. Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have received an necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item thirty-two, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the annual highway improvement program project, and accepting and authorizing the use of revenue received for departmental services completed in conjunction with the capital project. Counselor Bouchard moves approval.
Counselor Mattson, seconds.
Okay. Mayor Broten makes a motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Mattson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach. Counselor Keach.
Counselor Keach, can he done mute, please?
He's a yes, okay. Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
All right, Keach, yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian. Counselor Nian.
He's frozen again.
Go back to him. Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Have received an necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. And the last one for this evening, Madam Clerk, item thirty-three, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, equipment and overtime, and accepting the sum of one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in Department of Justice Fiscal Year 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding.
Hatfield moves approval.
Bouchard, seconds.
Motion made by Counselor Hatfield, seconded by Mayor Broten. Seeing no one raising their hands, Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
He's frozen.
We'll come back to him again. Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Counselor Nian. Counselor Nian, I can't see what...
He's frozen.
He's still frozen.
Just wait a second or so.
That's what happens when your kids play video games.
Counselor Nine?
Counselor.
Or do you vote?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you. Have received an necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. That finishes our action phase of our public hearing. There are no reports, and it takes us to new budget, new business. Item thirty-four. So, Mr. Manager, if you don't mind, I'm just going to go ahead with this one. So I asked the manager to put this on the agenda, and I just wanted to talk to you all briefly about this. The purpose of putting on it was to remind everybody that last month, we all adopted a schedule for going through the budget. And I think tonight is a pretty good illustration that it's with using the technology we are, it's probably going to take a little longer than it might normally would if we were all in person. So I think that the first time we get together is when the manager will present the budget to us. And I think the delivery is going to be later this week. But when we get together for budget review by the manager, I just want you to all think about how you might envision breaking this up a little bit. I've talked to the Chair of the Fiscal Policy, Counselor Nian. And we both, you know, I'm not, neither one of us are going to set forth any dates tonight. But I just wanted you to all think about how comfortable you are with the existing schedule. Do we want to break it up a little more to give ourselves a little bit of time? And I think most importantly, we want to make sure we give plenty of time for folks who are in the public who want to participate during the public hearing process. So I just, I'm not looking for any action, I'm not looking for any decision tonight. I just wanted to flag it for everybody to, to to come in thinking about what you might think of in terms of moving forward. And we also want to make sure we give each department a fair shake to be able to present anything they wish as well. So that was the purpose of just putting this on there. Mr. Manager, did you have anything else you want to add? Or Counselor Nian, did you want to add anything?
I know, Your Honor, I think that summarizes it pretty well. Flexibility is the key.
I agree. Okay. Anybody else have any questions while we're, any thoughts? Okay. Unfinished business, I don't have any, I don't believe either one of these are coming off. Is that correct? Okay. Takes us to comments, requests from counselors. Anybody you'd like to share anything?
I would, Your Honor.
Sure, Counsel Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to recognize Deputy City Manager LeBrun. He has worked very, very hard along with many folks in city administration for a number of years to bring home, almost, it's getting towards the end, of a successful project with Unitil for our LED of a successful project with Unitil for our LED streetlights for the entire city of Concord. The PUC does need to, um, look at this situation, and there was a item in our consent agenda authorizing the city manager to work with Unitil, uh, to make sure that process goes smoothly. I think the main point is that, uh, we anticipate that we'll be able to replace almost, uh, over two thousand uh, streetlights with LED technology, which is gonna save our city a lot of money and is an environmentally responsible thing to do. But as I said, uh, Brian LeBrun has worked on this project for many, many years, uh, with Unitil, and I just wanna recognize all the great work that's been done by him and others to get to this point. So, we anticipate success, and I just want to, uh, say hats off to him for all the great work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, Counselor Keach?
Um, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Pierce?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, we mentioned the Bog Road earlier, uh. I, I do wanna thank, uh, General Services and, uh, the folks, certainly from Continental Paving. It's been quite an experience, uh. I have gone out there quite often while the work's being done, not to check on them because I don't know what they're doing. But it's, it's important talking to the neighbors. They're very happy, uh. The city interfaced with the neighbors very, very well, knocked on their doors, um, and I thought it was, it was done very professionally. And secondly, I, I wanted to, uh, give a shout out to, uh, Danielle at the, uh, city's legal department. We had a landowner that, um, uh, blocked off the, uh, trail. It was a question on ownership of the rail trail, and I thought, uh, Danielle, Ashik, and, and, and that group handled it very, very well, and, uh, and the trail is now open all the way to the River Hill Market. So, uh, my thanks to them for doing a good job.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fantasy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to say briefly, you know, as things start to reopen, uh, this week, and we'll see things reopening more and more over the next few weeks, I anticipate that we're gonna see, um, you know, some people who are happy about that and some people who are not, and I would encourage uh, all of the members of the council, uh, that we continue to work together, um, with the, the, the city administration, uh, to make sure that we can, uh, continue to proceed in a, a safe, but hopefully, um, uh, a productive fashion so that we can get the city back up and running. Um, recognizing that things are not gonna be a hundred percent for quite a while, but let's see if we can do the best we can to get it, uh, as close to that as possible.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Thank you. Uh, I've got three items. Um, the first is an update on how we're doing with the census counts. So, Concord has a sixty-six percent reporting rate right now, uh, which is, uh, pretty good in comparison to some other cities and towns, although, um, as Counselor Champlin pointed out to me, Bo is doing a little bit better than us, so if we want some neighborhood competition, we've gotta work on it. Uh, we do have posters and flyers for local businesses, and, um, thank you to the Economic Development Department that's working to help on outreach to some of those, um, parties to help us, as a lot of the census activities have had to close down, obviously, because of COVID. Um, and their social media kits available for any counselor who is interested in helping with that. Um, the second item is, we all received a correspondence, um, earlier today from a constituent who was asking about local ordinances regarding wearing masks, um, as the state starts to reopen, um. While I think that this is best served at the state level, since that is not happening, I anticipate we'll be getting this question a lot, so I'd like to refer it to the city solicitor, uh, to get a legal opinion on the, um, options there. And then the third item, uh, somewhat related to that, uh, I'm sure many of you have seen the video that was floating around about some of our local, um, police officers, uh, speaking to folks who were, um, who were using some of the park equipment, um, despite some of the public health, um, decisions we had made around, uh, making sure that those were closed down. And I just wanted to give a, a very big thank you to those officers who were involved in that. Um, for anybody who's watched the video, and there's thousands of people who have, um, I think that those officers just represented our city, uh, so well. They were professional, they were calm, they were considerate, um, and they did a real service for all of us, um, in doing that. And in fact, their response, um, is being used as a training video for other police departments across the state. So, just well done to those officers, and, and thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Um, well said. Uh, Counselor Todd, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I just wanted to note that it's, uh, regrettable that we, uh, there was a need to cancel the Memorial Day, uh, parade, uh, and other, uh, remembrances that are, uh, were scheduled, uh, for this year due to the pandemic, but I am hopeful that folks out there will, uh, still, uh, remember those who died in active military service and be able to, uh, 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 do their own remembrances in, in a safe way. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Kennedy, uh, try again. I don't, I hate to, you are a counselor. Yeah, I, that too. Mr. Solicitor?
Uh, yes, sir. I just wanted to make clear on Counselor Mattson's, uh, inquiry of the legal department. Uh, if that's the will of the council, we're certainly, uh, willing to conduct that inquiry. Uh, as many of you may know, the town of Salem, uh, has passed an ordinance requiring masks. Um, I think that's regarding a certain, uh, communication you received earlier today. Um, we can look into that. Uh, there may be some preemption issues there. I'm a bit unclear as to how the town of Salem, uh, underwent such a process. Uh, I did look at their, uh, ordinance, or resolution, or whatever it was that they passed. Um, but also, you should know that there's, uh, an executive order from the governor, and there's, uh, a significant reference to the use of masks in that order, uh, concerning, uh, businesses opening, uh, employees requiring to wear masks, and in some instances, certainly with cosmetology, there's, uh, requirements for, clients entering those, uh, facilities to wear masks. So, uh, like I said, we're happy down to go that analysis. Uh, really, it's gonna be analysis of preemption, because as you may know, there's a statute RSA one forty-one C entitled communicable disease, uh, that actually addresses the pandemic that we're, uh, all engaged in right now. Um, and there's, it's a very comprehensive statute, and, uh, it demonstrates the power and authority of the state of New Hampshire to address this, uh, specific situation. Um, but I haven't conducted the, you know, the, the complete, uh, statutory, uh, analysis to present preemption at this point. But if that's the will of the council, uh, to determine the scope of its authority to do what the town of Salem did relative to, uh, requiring masks for people entering certain establishments, commercial establishments, and the like, uh, we're happy to do that, but I just wanna make sure that I get direction, uh, from the council as a whole, or at least a quorum of majority there, too.
Thank you very much, Counselor Weiss-Hawkins.
Yeah, if I may, um, you know, I think one of the things about, um, about how this is playing out is, uh, for example, in the governor's press conference today, he received this question, and he said that, um, local communities will have to decide that for themselves, which I'll, I'll admit I was a little surprised about because I, I wouldn't have thought that we would have had the authority to do that. So, I think as we're getting this question, I would like to know from you just what the legality is of that before we would even venture into whether or not we think that we should move forward with that.
Anybody else have a comment on this topic?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Broten.
I'm sorry, I don't have little, my little hands disappeared on my zoom, I don't know. But, um, I, I do, um, highly, highly, highly recommend everyone wear a mask, and I understand the idea of having an ordinance. I'm just wondering how we can enforce such an ordinance? You know, I mean, you know, to have the ordinance and then, you know, the enforceability of it. That's my concern, but I highly, highly recommend that everyone wear a mask.
Anyone else? I, I guess the question is, uh, how far do we want the solicitor's office to get down the road with this, doing research and analysis?
Mr. Mayor, I think if they have the bandwidth to do it, I think it, it does make sense for us to be prepared for additional requests for us to take that action. Um, so I think if they do have the capacity to do it, 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 it would be nice to have, just have an understanding of what our, uh, capabilities are.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna go with Counselor Fantasy, and then, uh, Mr. Kennedy, if you respond afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My recommendation at this point would be to direct the solicitor to explore further the authority upon which the town of Salem is relying upon for its ordinance, and I, I think report back based on that. I, I don't think it's, uh, it would be a good use of the solicitor's time at this point to do a, a deep dive into the preemption issues until we understand what the town of Salem is relying upon.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Counselor Fantasy. That's, that's helpful, and actually, I do have their, uh, ordinance in front of me and do, uh, see that they're relying on a statute titled RSA one forty-seven-one, which is our health officer statute, which authorizes health officers to enact or, uh, create rules and regulations relative to public health matters that that health officer may, uh, enforce in their, um, duties within the town or city. Um, that's the statute that they cite. Uh, like I said, I don't understand how that gives them the authority to create this ordinance that, uh, they've created. Um, I look at, uh, one forty-one C as a comprehensive and complete statute. I look at RSA one forty-seven-one, which authorizes the city of Concord as a health officer to, uh, create rules and regulations that may be necessary within the city relative to public health. Um, but I'm not so sure that that contemplates, uh, the pandemic health issue that we're engaged in right now. Um, so I do know, uh, to answer your, your initial inquiry, I do at least see in the ordinance that they're citing RSA one forty-seven-one, which gives them the authority. I'm telling you, I don't, at least at this juncture, necessarily understand how that gives the town, certainly without a health officer, or at least that they cite in the ordinance, uh, the authority to create such a rule. That being said, um, Counselor Weiss-Hawkins is correct. I did read at least the news report, uh, where it was reported that the governor stated that this is a pandemic and towns can, uh, do what they want in this situation. I, for me, that's, um, you know, I, he may be right, um, but I've certainly looked at least, uh, uh, at one forty-one C while we've been going through this and looking at the breadth, scope, and comprehensiveness of that statute, uh, relative to the state's authority, power, and governance over, uh, the situation that we're all in right now.
I have, Counselor Fantasy, did you have anything to add? Did you respond?
I just wanted to thank the solicitor for that quick analysis on the fly there. I appreciate that. Um, from my perspective, uh, if we're going to go down this road at any point, um, we need to consider the fact that, um, I think there's likely gonna be a legal challenge to, you know, whatever town ordinances are implemented. So, uh, just a, a note of caution there if we go down this road.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Keach?
Thank you. Um, I just think that, um, uh, enlightenment and education is probably more effective than enforcement at this point. Um, I think to let, share the most, most amount of in, information you can to folks, and, um, if you come down hard, it's gonna backfire. So, enlightenment and education makes more sense. So, I'll leave it at that.
Um, Counselor Warner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm quite surprised about the ordinance in Salem. I, I, uh, you know, the preemption issues, I think, are paramount, and I agree with other comments that, um, I would expect, uh, legal challenges to arise. This, and I'm, and I'm also quite surprised at the governor's comments. It seemed rather sweeping. But, um, I'm very skeptical that, uh, we or any other municipality has the, uh, legal ability to do this, um, as a result of the existing preemption that we all live with and we're, are well aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jeff.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I have to say that no, no one's more annoyed than I am when I go out wearing a mask and, and others aren't. Uh, as a elderly gentleman at, uh, at one of the local businesses last weekend said to the young clerk who had no mask, "It's not about you, it's about me. It's about helping to protect each other, uh, not protect ourselves," uh, since the masks really serve not to spread contagion from those of us who may be infected and not know about it, who may be, uh, contagious and not know about it, may be asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic. Um, on the other hand, I think that, um, a lot of people, in my opinion, inappropriately, um, have, uh, made this into a, a point of resistance, uh, for their own personal reasons, uh, which I think, you know, potentially places our law enforcement people, as we saw, uh, in the incident, uh, incidents at the, uh, Rollins Park Playground, into the position of, uh, of, uh, being a point of confrontation, uh, with people who, um, have an axe to grind or a point to make. Um, and, uh, to that extent, I would rather rely on peer pressure, uh, and, uh, and the, uh, the influence the community can convey, uh, on folks to, uh, look after the other guy and gal, uh, and, and wear a mask for their protection, uh, than to try to follow, uh, Salem's lead. Uh, so, I, I would, I would hesitate to have us really, uh, go down, too far down this path. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Um, any other counselor wishes to speak? Okay. Um, I, I guess I am extremely reluctant to ask the, um, the solicitor to do any sort of real legal research. I, I personally don't see it, um, practical to move forward with this, you know, type of, um, uh, change. I wear my mask, I wear it to protect myself, I wear it to protect others, but, you know, we all can give our own personal experiences, and today I went to, to grab some lunch downtown, and who was I standing next to? None other than the Attorney, New Hampshire Attorney General. And was he wearing a mask? No. So, so, um, yeah, if, uh, our chief law enforcement officer of the state of New Hampshire's not wearing it, I, yeah, I think it'd be pretty tough to enforce, and, um, I don't know that it's a great use of our solicitor's time to, to chase this down further. Um, I, that's, that's from my perspective. If you all want him to do this, then great, we'll make, we'll treat it like everything else, give a referral. But, um, uh, as someone else probably said much better, uh, this is about education, and, um, you know what? I think you can all politely nudge your friends, your colleagues, and others to, uh, hopefully wear, um, the appropriate gear, so. Uh, that might be the best way to handle it, but that's my opinion. I, I do have, um, uh, Mr. Kennedy and Counselor Fantasy both raised their hands. Mr. Kennedy, you've been waiting, so do you wanna go first?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. I think we're, um, based on the discussion I've heard, I'm, I'm not speaking any further.
Thank you. Counselor Fantasy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would just refer to a quote attributed to Abraham Lincoln, which is, "Laws without enforcement are just good advice." So, if there's no way to enforce this, uh, and, uh, I think it's really just good advice, and I, I, I think at this point, education and peer pressure is gonna be a lot more effective than, uh, trying to compel people.
Okay. So, I guess in summary, um, Counselor Weiss-Hawkins, um, thank you very much for bringing this up. Um, we all received the, the email, and I appreciate you, um, uh, bringing it forward to us, and unless somebody else wants to, um, go for, further, um, I hope you all encourage your friends and neighbors to, to wear masks. Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Oh, I was just gonna add, uh, or just follow up to say, um, I appreciate everybody's comments. I, I didn't mean to get into a discussion about whether or not we should pursue this track, but I do, um, believe- but I do, um, believe you'll probably get a lot more requests of this nature since the state's not taking leadership here, so. Um, I understand that folks don't wanna pursue that tonight, but I do think that we should anticipate, uh, if this continues to linger, that we'll be asked that question more often, so I appreciate everybody's comments.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Um, okay. Uh, anyone else have anything else, um, they'd like to share? Okay, I have, uh, but, uh, one. So, uh, what I would like to share is, this morning, um, myself, um, uh, system manager, um, Mr. Waiya, and I participated in a Zoom call with, uh, several of the downtown restaurants. And, um, as you all know, um, next Monday, the, the governor has authorized, uh, restaurants to move forth with outside dining. Uh, the question became, is that, how do we proceed with that? Um, for instance, you know, the use of sidewalks, uh, so, do we, do we allow people to, um, use parking spaces, for instance? Uh, you know, and you can, when you think about Main Street, for instance, it's, most of the restaurants, as you all know, are on the east side of the road or the northbound, uh, lane. And, um, there's only probably two, I think, in the, uh, west side of the street. So, and then there are, uh, several, um, uh, establishments that are on, um, you know, whether it be Store Street or Depot Street and otherwise. So I think that, um, I just wanted to say thank you for, um, the Community Development Department and, uh, Mr. Waiya getting out front of this to work with the restaurants and try to figure out how to do this and how to do it safely. Um, I think that it's probably gonna end up being a case-by-case basis, uh, because you can imagine the needs of, say, at one end Barley House versus the needs of, uh, Live Juice on the other end are, uh, are very different. Um, I'll also just share with you that, um, the, uh, enforcement at the Liquor Commission has, uh, been in contact with the city and myself, and they are prepared to, uh, work with all the, um, the merchants downtown. So, uh, in sharing that, I just wanted to also share this. The, the manager is, uh, clearly authorized under the existing ordinance to, uh, deal with, um, encumbered spaces and has the ability to under, to, to shut down roads and, and such. We've, you know, we've done it for, uh, you know, Rock and Road Race or Market Days or, you know, other things like that. Part of this is, it's temporary in nature. Um, obviously, when we go back to inside dining, then it will revert back to, um, the way it was before. But, um, in this temporary instance, I think I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, the manager does have the authority and, um, and I believe he'll work with the, um, all the restaurants. The, and, and again, the, the last part of it is, the, the restaurants who are in, uh, Eagle Square or by Centennial Square, you know, their needs are probably different than those that are, that are actually on Main Street. So I put that out there for your consideration. The, the one thing that I would like to, to get some consensus around, and that is that if, um, if the manager so chooses to allow some of these restaurants to use some of the parking spaces, um, and by the way, that's what they're doing in Nashua and Manchester and otherwise, um, that, uh, there's typically a fifteen dollar fee per day, uh, to encumber that space. And I would just ask the council's consideration to, um, to give him some guidelines. I, I would waive that fee personally, um, because, one, it's a temporary in nature, and, uh, I, I think that it's, you know, we, we probably should be working with the restaurants as, as, uh, closely and as, as best we can, so. I, I would waive that, but I throw that out for your consideration, and any other thoughts you have regarding, uh, outdoor dining?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I also, this, Council Bouchard, and sorry, I don't have my little hands, but, uh, I, um, I also agree we should, uh, waive the fee. I mean, the, the, yeah, the distress the restaurants have been under with being closed and lack of, uh, being able to have customers in, but I was wondering what considerations are giving to restaurants outside of, uh, Main Street, uh, like, i.e. Loudoun Road? Are they gonna be able also to, um, use their, um, parking lots and, you know, put tables outside?
So those are, um, all on private property, and, um, they can do, you know, with their parking lots what they wish. The, this is, the issue here and the reason I'm raising it is dealing with public property.
Okay, just wanted to be clear that.
So whether it's Arnie's.
Yeah. Motive, okay, great.
Mr. Manager?
So, Council Bouchard, in the case where there might be an impact on required parking in the private, um, private property, uh, Community Development Department would work with those folks to make sure that both the, the needed parking, uh, is there as best as can be, but what we plan to be as flexible as possible to make sure that those, those businesses can do the same thing as downtown could do.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's Council Pierce, I have a question. Is there, as part of the plan, the logistical plan, who decides how many parking spots each restaurant gets?
I guess that's what I was referring to, is it's really, um, uh, probably gonna be a case-by-case basis, and that would be the administration has the authority to, to decide that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Council Kennison?
Yeah, I, uh, would not waive the fee, because I think there's a fairness aspect here where those restaurants that do not have the opportunity or to, uh, use parking spaces and so on would, um, I just don't think it's fair that, um, without some fee for those who are able to use, uh, parking spaces and so forth. So I would not waive the fee.
Council Chaplin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, you and Deputy City Manager for reaching out to the restaurants. Uh, this whole question of perhaps closing off sections of Main Street, uh, to allow restaurants, uh, to take advantage of the, of the governor's guidelines, uh, for outdoor dining has certainly been something that I've heard from several non-restaurant owning constituents about, um, and as recently as, uh, as this afternoon. Um, I would be, despite the, the potential loss of, uh, parking revenue, uh, by surrendering spaces, I would, uh, uh, agree with you that we should waive, uh, the fifteen dollar fee. Uh, my reasoning is this, that, uh, being able to, uh, have outside dining with tables six feet apart, limited to six people, I think that's the guideline, uh, in, at each table, these restaurants are still only gonna be marginally profitable. Uh, and so to the extent that the city can support their recovery, uh, from the shutdown, uh, by waiving the fee, um, I would be in favor of, uh, of helping out, uh, our very important, uh, restaurateurs, uh, downtown, uh, who don't have the advantage of private parking lots or lawns or things of that nature. Thanks very much, Your Honor.
Thank you. Um, Council Fantasy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm interested, during the course of your conversation, was there any concerns raised by restaurant owners about the potential impact, uh, shutting down the parking would have on their delivery revenue? Uh, 'cause I'd have some concerns that, that may limit the ability of, of people to come down and, and do pickup.
Um, uh, thank you for raising that question. Uh, there was, uh, very limited discussion around that, and I think the conclusion is that, as you know, um, some of the retail merchants will be opening as well, uh, later this week. And, uh, they were very careful to consider, uh, making sure that they were good neighbors with other, uh, with everyone, uh, because just as much as they wanna be successful, they want their neighbor to be successful as well. Um, and, uh, so there was an acknowledgement that they, they needed to take as many, but not too many. Um, and, and I, I'll also share this with you. There, um, not everyone's gonna go forth with this, it just doesn't make sense for, for some. Uh, and, and so I think that it may be fewer than, um, originally thought. Uh, many of the restaurants, what I've found is that they are having a difficult time, um, getting the front-of-the-house employees, the waiters, waitresses, um, to come back, that right now they're, um, they're collecting unemployment, and, um, it, they're, it's a challenge to, to get, um, a workforce to make it happen. The second issue is, um, you know, although they have the potential to be open, you know, with the guidelines that have come down with, uh, from the state, um, for instance, you know, everyone has to be six feet apart, uh, they all wear masks, there's gotta be wiping down of the tables and chairs, all the kind of things between the patrons. It's, there's, there's a limited capacity as to be able to do all that. And, um, so I think you're, you're, you raised it, that question is important, is that how many do we actually do? But I think it may be fewer than, uh, originally anticipated. The la- the last point I think I'll make, just to make sure everybody's aware, is that there wasn't a question, uh, brought up regarding community tables. Um, as you know, in front of, say, the works, there are several tables and chairs out there, and, um, if you were to get food at another establishment, you can go and you can sit down at one of those tables and chairs and eat your lunch or sandwich, whatever it might be. And, um, uh, that's readily acceptable to, to the works and others. Problem lies is that, um, somebody has to be responsible for cleaning those tables, uh, sanitizing, wiping down. When they're community tables, uh, the question is, who's gonna take responsibility for that?
What? Are you muted? Mute Fred.
Okay, so there's some, uh, there's some discussion as to, um, how that all works, and, and, and again, um, it's very clear that the, uh, the manager, um, after talking to the solicitor, the manager has the authority to do those things, but the point is, there are a lot of considerations to make this happen. It's a very long-winded way to try to answer your question, I hope I did.
That was very helpful, thank you.
Anybody else? So, um, is there, is there a general thought about, uh, whether we wanna waive the fee or not?
Uh, Mayor, if I may add one comment first?
I'm sorry, please.
That's okay. Very good. Uh, it's not directly on the proposal, but just, um, and I'm sure there was nothing meant by this, but the reference to, um, the workforce issues with unemployment, um, I'd just like to make sure that we're thoughtful about the fact that some people aren't returning to work because of childcare issues or having at-risk individuals in the home or being concerned about putting their own public health at risk, um, by being on the frontlines, especially as some community members aren't taking the public health crisis seriously. So while workforce issues are certainly a, a serious concern, um, it's not, uh, so, uh, one-dimensional, it's just the unemployment check. Thank you.
I don't think I generalized, I think I was actually very specific, and, and that was from, um, very specific restaurateurs who talked specifically about their, uh, particular employees, so. Uh, no, I concur with your comments, I just, uh, I, I am passing along what was shared with me from, uh, several specific Concord restaurants. Um, I have, uh, Council Knight?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, most of my comments have already been spoken, um, spoken to. I'm fully in favor of waiving the fifteen dollar fee. Um, bringing people downtown certainly will encourage additional business with other members or, or other businesses. It seems to make sense for all involved. Thank you.
So, um, since we're on a Zoom call, would it be appropriate to simply just have the, uh, clerk, um, call a roll? Let's see whether we should or should not, um, waive the fee?
I'll make a motion that we waive the fee, Your Honor.
I second.
Second.
Bouchard seconds.
Um, Madam Clerk?
Councilor Bouchard?
Yes, to waiving the fee.
Mayor Boulay?
Yes.
Councilor Chaplin?
Yes.
Councilor Fantasy?
Yes.
Councilor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Councilor Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilor Keach?
Yes.
Councilor Kennison?
Not wanting to be an outlier, I'll say yes.
Councilor Kretovic?
Yes.
Councilor Matson? Councilor Matson?
Yes.
Councilor Nian?
Yes.
Councilor Pierce?
Yes.
Councilor Rice-Hawkins?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
And Councilor Warner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Manager, I think you have your direction. Um, does anybody else have anything they wanna bring up before we move on? Okay, Mr. Manager, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, we have no suspense item before us, so does anybody else have anything they'd like to bring forth? Council Fantasy?
So this is just more of a question back to, uh, what you spoke about earlier, uh, with respect to what our schedule's gonna look like for consideration of the budget. When do you anticipate, uh, um, coming up with what the, what the plan is going to be?
Um, well, I was trying, I was hopefully trying to encourage people to take a look at their schedules, um, take a look at the budget when it's presented to us, and as the manager, um, gives us a review, um, maybe you get a better feel for how much time you wanna spend on various things. And, um, so I was hoping to do it, um, the night of the manager's review of the budget. Mr. Manager, you had your hand raised?
You saw the Council. You saw the Council Fantasy is aware as well. So the Council of Fantasy's aware, the, um, City Council, uh, acting as the Finance Committee, after every meeting of the budget, uh, working on the budget, they make a determination about what's gonna happen next and potentially change the schedule, meeting after meeting. So that's what we'll do, depending on how the, the process goes. I'm changing the process this year in terms of what we present, try to make it a little clearer and, um, uh, a little better, so hopefully that will also dovetail with exactly what the mayor's saying. And, um, so, but at the end of each meeting, then you'll make a determination of what you wanna handle at the next meeting, and that way you give the community the ability to understand what's coming up for the next meeting, so in case they wanna testify, they'll, they'll know what's going on.
Thank you.
Council Chaplin?
Thank you. Um, I just wonder, uh, I haven't seen a link for those meetings yet, um.
Do you have a watch?
Pardon me?
Mr. Manager?
The links aren't out until after the mayor had his comments regarding tonight, and after tonight, those links will go out. So Casey decided he convinced the council to change something else. We didn't wanna send the links out and have to recall, do it over again.
Thank you. Uh, Council Chaplin?
Thank you, Your Honor, I'm afraid we have a phone, a ringing in the house. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, that I can, I, I, uh, uh, agree with your course of action. I've had, uh, at least, uh, one constituent reach out to me with concern that the public have, uh, sufficient opportunities to, uh, comment on, uh, this coming fiscal year's budget deliberations, given that, uh, you know, the uncertainty over city revenues and possible changes, uh, that might take place. So, uh, your, uh, suggestion, I think, would give us the opportunity to give our constituents, uh, a chance to weigh in, and, uh, it very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Hatfield?
Um, Council Chaplin said what I was thinking, um, and I also just wanted to, um, for the public's benefit, um, ask you, is that presentation Thursday, June 4th at 5:30 PM?
I don't have my calendar for me, but I believe that's true.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
The, the, um, presentation is actually next Monday.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, you'll get the, you'll get the budget on Thursday, the presentation is Monday, the June 4th is the tentative adoption date. So, uh, folks are able to, um, testify, um, based on what council would like to do, uh, usually at the end of each section of the budget, and then also on the final night, when you decide if you did, make any changes, which you always do to the budget, you'll also be able to testify at the, right at the very end, so that everybody will see everything on the table at once.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Council Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a different topic, so if, uh, the other counselors wanna s- continue to speak on this one, they can do that.
Okay, Council Rice-Hawkins?
Yeah, I was just gonna clarify, 'cause I think I got this wrong last year as a newbie. Thursday's not a meeting, it's just we get the budget and then we do the meeting on Monday.
Yes.
Awesome, thanks. I think I sat alone in the council chamber for a while last year.
Um, so if I have it correctly, uh, Council Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just a reminder to the rest of the council that it is that time of year again where we do our evaluation of the city manager. Uh, myself, Council Fantasy, Council Chaplin will be getting together to do that review, and you should expect the link to, uh, that we send out, um, for your evaluation, and I would remind, it's one of the, um, obligations that we take on. And I would remind, it's one of the obligations that we take on as an elected official that we do this. It's super important, so we always like one hundred percent participation. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think I have any other person's hand raised, so if not, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
To move?
Second.
Motion made, second to adjourn. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boulay?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton? Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hatfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kennison? Counsel Kennison?
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic?
Yes.
Counsel Matson?
Yes.
Counsel Nye?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Here.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
Okay. We are adjourned, it was great to see everybody, thanks for everybody's patience tonight. Be safe. Love one another. Take care. Keep your distance.
Be well, wear your mask.